The council will call the, the chair will call the city council to adjourn for Tuesday, September 3rd, and with that we'll ask for roll call.
Councilmember Burbank?
Here.
Rainey?
Here.
Svenby?
Here.
Trulson?
Here.
Dodson?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Abraham?
Here.
Mayor Coons?
Here.
We have all seven in the council present.
Thanks, please rise and join me in the budget review.
........................
Thank you, and I would like to welcome everyone here tonight, and with that we do have two items on the agenda that are changed. I see 2.3.3, the minutes are taken off from the consent agenda items, and we've added 3.2.3, community service officers. That looking for a motion for approval to-
Motion for approval as noted.
-by Brent Svenby, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, these changes have been made. Now we'll move on to the next item, which is 1.1, 4.1, Park Passport Program, and we'll go to Tom with that.
Thank you Les, this is the second year of the Oatana Park Passport Program. It's a program with the combination of the City of Oatana and Mayo Clinic Health Systems. It's there for, for promote, promote healthy choices, individual lifestyles. It's a program that encourages people to walk through our parks and look for hidden passwords along the trail. You can sign up for this program either come to the City of Oatana Park and Rec Department or go to their website, which is ci.oatana.mn.us/parksrecreation. And the program is free, the program works, goes through Dart's Park, Mineral Springs Park, Manthies Park, Kaplan's Woods Trail, Leo Rudolph Nature's Reserve, and Buckston's Trail. And as you're walking through these parks, there's a little sign that's about two to four foot off the ground, and on the backside of the signs will be a password. That password is what you need to write down in the back of your passport thing that you pick up for the application. In the first two weeks, the signs are yellow, the next two weeks, the signs are white. And as you complete all 12 of the passports, you can turn them in, and there will be a drawing on October 1st at city council. The program ends on September 30th, so you need to have them in before September 30th. And they have some great prizes for the, for the winners. First prize is family golf membership at Brick Tree Golf Course for the 2014 season, $650 value. Bike package number one, gift card at Straight River Sports, $500 value. Bike package two, gift card at Straight River Sports, $300 value. 60 passes to River Springs Water Park, 2014 season, $300 value. And outdoor sports pack, $100 value. So, we encourage all of our citizens to take advantage of the Oatana Park passports, get and have the opportunity to walk through our parks, and if you're lucky, there's great prizes to win at the end.
Thank you. And any questions on that? That will move on to the financial report, and I'll do a quick recap. I've got $27,765 for Hesleton Construction for East Broadway Pay Extension, $100,174 for Hesleton for West School Street Pay Extension, $253,311 for James Brothers for 12th Avenue Northwest, $341,173 for Don Bowdenbury Construction for Northwest Industrial Park Bond, $799,098 for Minger Construction and a 2013 utility and street project, $21,112 for Oatana Area Chamber of Commerce for the 95% of July lodging tax, $25,089 for Yocum Oil for Street Fuel, $46,760 for Steel County Auditor, second quarter 2013 LEC costs, $70,089 for John and Sandra Rashavi Home, purchase on 223 Lamont Road, $104,570 for federal sign, emergency warning sirens, $134,289 for other expenditures for a total, subtotal of $1,923,414. And to that, we add the September 1st Section 8 payments of $67,385 for a total expenditure of $1,990,800. What is the council's wishes?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve the bills, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, these have been approved. The next item on the agenda are the consent agenda items, which are minutes, license and permit requests, department reports, event permits, contracts, et cetera, all grouped into one motion to improve the timing of our meetings. Any questions on the consent?
So move we approve the consent agenda?
We have a motion by Raymond Trulson to approve the consent agenda items, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. And we move on to action items, 3.1.1, new 3.2 liquor license for Aldi Foods, number 13, and this we will go to Chris.
Thank you Les, what you have before you here is an application for a new 32.3, 3.2 liquor license for Aldi's, they've met all of our requirements in terms of insurance and application fees, staff would recommend approval.
Thank you Chris, questions from the council? We have a motion by Raymond to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. The next item is 3.1.2, new on sale liquor license for Andy Amo Restaurant, and again Chris.
Yes, this is a application for the new Italian restaurant going in the former Big Ten location. They have also submitted all the necessary documentation, insurance, and application fees, and staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Greg Schultz to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Raymond Trulson, any further discussion?
Les, we do have the new owner here in the audience, if you want to welcome him or if he has anything to add.
What's your planned opening date, you know, what date are you going to open?
Come on, come on.
The date is that 23rd.
Show up the microphone.
Come up to the microphone here.
We're going to get you on a local TV.
On a local TV now, I'm going to be famous now. Well, we're trying to open in a couple of weeks, two and a half weeks, September 23rd. Things are going okay, but a lot of work to do still, so I think we'll be okay. Thank you for helping the mayor here, so.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, you know, all your help, you've been done for us, so.
Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second to approve this, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, congratulations and welcome. With that we'll move on to contracts and agreements, 3.2.1, Airport Commission Non-Aeronautical Land Lease with Walser, and that will go to Troy.
The attached agreement with Walser provides for the non-aer- aeronautical use of land, leased land of .41 acres on the north side of the airport adjacent to the Walser development. So, right now there's an airspace, a land for, clear space on the north side there of the airport, it's not being utilized at all. Walser would like some additional land for having vehicles displayed there and to square off kind of their parking lot there, so it's something that we've been working on to get this with the Walser property. The subject parcel was acquired utilizing Federal Aviation Administration grant funding and is federally obligated land for aviation and safety zone purposes. Therefore, the FAA had to review this use and require that it be obtained approval for non-aer- aeronautical use to determine suitability and ensure that the area would continue to serve the primary purpose in which it was acquired. The lease area is outside runway 23 Clear Zone and the Runway Protection Zone. The agreement provides for an interim, or an initial term of 10 years with options to extend the term subject to conditions that do include if the airport ever does need that property, that we could get it back again and use it for airport purposes. And the Airport Commission has approved this, as well as the city attorney. The land lease rent would generate about $4,427 per year of additional airport revenue and does include terms for rate escalator based on the Consumer Price Index. So, staff would recommend approval of this lease agreement with Walser, as well as approval of the, of the acceptance of the FAA approval letter containing the terms and conditions required by the FAA for concurrent use. And so, part of that FAA approval is the council has to accept the letter, which was added to your agenda and given to you, I think, there, that we're agreeing to this. And a lot of language taken, put in that letter is taken directly from the lease agreement we have with Walser.
And that is accepted by Walser also?
Yes.
Thank you, Raymond.
Got a question Troy, I read in there something about every year they look at what they charge, but does that go up a little bit every year, or how, I read in there something about you would look at land usage or what, something, could you explain that a little bit?
Yep, so right now we have a land lease price, and that can be adjusted annually based on the Consumer Price Index. So, I think we have incorporated in there some maximums that could go up per year, but it takes into account inflation basically, so that we can get a current rate continually each year and have that reviewed annually.
Will the Airport Commission look at that annually, or will they be the body in charge? So, that'll be on a come up then, type of thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, any other questions? Motion by Raymond to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Now we'll move on to 3.2.2, Work Order Number 3, Revised 23 Airport Master Plan, and that will go back to Troy.
The city council approved an agreement with Boltland Mink for master plan, airport layout plan services back in April. This approval was contingent upon confirmation from the FAA, their 90% project grant. During the grant application and approval process, FAA provided comments requiring revisions to the strategic business plan element of the project, so that it would meet the grant eligibility requirements. This component of the project has now been revised and is consistent with their requirements. So, there's a work order here to revise that original agreement, provides for changes in the project management team point of contact as well. They had Marcus Watson is who we were working with, he no longer works for Boltland Mink, so they don't have a planner on staff, and so the point person would be Ms. Summer Marr from Marr Arnold Planning. She's highly qualified for the work as an aviation planner with years of experience in master planning. The work order has been revised to reflect the changes in the project management team as well as the business planning component, scope of work. It does result in about a $3,500 reduction than the original amount, so the total amount of the project would be 176,200 with an additional 11,200 for optional services if authorized by the city, and we would bring that to you if that is something that we wanted to pursue. The project is eligible for 90% federal funding, and staff would recommend approval of the agreement with Boltland Mink for the 2013 Airport Master Plan, Airport Layout Plan Project. And then you will also, in the packet, council later today have a resolution accepting that grant agreement under the resolutions.
Okay, thank you very much, and with that, questions from the council?
Is that Troy with additional 11,000, is that what you want to add to them?
Yeah, we had to put in a maximum amount in our grant application, and so we had a budgeted amount that was approved by council. That 11,000 would take us over that, and that would need additional approval from you, but it was something that could be done, and so we want to include that in our grant application in case we did use it, the grant would already cover that 90%, but we're not anticipating that we would need that 11,000 for those additional services at this point.
Any other questions? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Now we'll go to the one that was added, 3.2.3, Community Service Officer for Independent School District 761, and there we go to Chris.
Yes, thank you Les, council is being asked to enter into an agreement with the school district to allow for additional community service officers to serve in the, in the schools. Currently, they have just, actually, we have two community service officers, this would provide for an additional three community service officers to serve in the high school and the junior high. The school would cover all of the costs, fringe benefits, everything included in the hiring of these full-time community service officers. This would replace their current security, and the CSOs would be located at the main entrances and provide security for those, those buildings. So, this is an annual agreement, it includes an amount not to exceed, I believe it's 136,000, which reflects the full-time wage and benefit costs for those positions, which would include family health insurance. It's not clear at this time, these people have not been hired, so there's adequate funds there to cover all of our costs, and as I said, it's an annual renewal, so if costs increase, then we would simply request that amount from the school district. Staff would recommend approval of the agreement.
Thank you Chris, questions from Raymond?
Chris, by just receiving this today from them, I got a question, what if we cannot provide the people that we hire, see if they're absent or sick, or we take our staff to fill the difference, is that the plan? Because if we can't provide two or three people and they're sick or gone out of town or something, do we take out of our staff then to fulfill that agreement?
That's why the, the school would, wants to have us hire three to allow for that backup for illness and vacation. So, their feeling is with the three CSOs, they'd be more than adequate to cover their own issues. Now that being said, if they run into something unusual, would we help them out and back it up with our own CSOs? Yeah, we would.
But otherwise, we'd have to take our staff?
Right, but with the three, it should be fine.
I understand.
And I believe we have two current on staff, right?
Yes, we do.
Two, we have two, we have three there.
Those are licensed officers, the CSOs?
We also have school resource officers, and that's different, those are full-time, fully licensed police officers. This is not what we're talking about, we're talking CSOs who are not, you know-
They're, they've got a degree in law, but they haven't got the license yet.
Correct.
CSOs do not carry weapons.
That is true, right, exactly.
Mark, has your office had a chance to look at this today, or Dave, or Dave rather, not Mark?
No, we haven't had a chance, but we'll certainly look into that if there's any questions that the council has for us.
I'd like to move, we approve with the, Mark looking at it and getting back to us by the next meeting, good, good point David.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with that notation, and do we have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Second by Dave Burbank, any further questions or comments?
Do we have any idea what the savings is to the district going this route?
Actually, I think it will cost them additional than, I don't know that there's necessarily a savings, but there was a, a quality of service that they were after.
Yep. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. And now we will move on to the next item, Board and Commission Recommendations, 3.3.1, Final Plaid of Pillsbury First Edition, and there we go to Troy.
So, this is the final plaid of Pillsbury First Edition, and you had the first preliminary plaid at the last meeting. This is the plating of three commercial lots on the east side of Pillsbury campus, creating two new lots, the existing gymnasium would, would be on the third lot, the fourth lot then is just consolidating the rest of the campus under one parcel. Planning Commission recommended approval, staff would recommend approval as recommended by the Planning Commission. Later in the meeting, you'll have a second reading of the ordinance of that rezoning. We would not record that ordinance until the final plaid then is recorded to keep them together.
Okay, thank you, anything else with that?
No.
Okay, Raymond?
Troy, we had any public input since we started that?
I have not gotten any comments since the last meeting.
Chris, have you had anything on that?
I have not received any, no.
Okay, what is the council's wishes on this one?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey, any further discussion? See, none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. And now we move on to resolutions, 3.4.1, Resolution 7913, proposed 2014 levy. Do I go to you Chris, or do I go to Rhonda?
Rhonda.
We'll go to Rhonda on this one.
Okay, you have three resolutions before you tonight to set the 2014 levy amounts and to adopt a 2014 budget. The city is required to adopt a proposed budget for 2014 and certify the proposed property tax levy for 2014 to the county auditor on or before September 16. For 2014, the city is subject to a levy limit. This levy limit would allow for an increase in the levy. The city is proposing to not raise the levy. Total proposed levy for 2014 for the city is $9,817,265, which is no change from the last year's levy. This levy amount includes both the city levy of $9,697,265 and the HRA levy of $120,000. In 2013 and 2012, the preliminary levies reflected 2% increases, but the final levies that were adopted in December reflected a 1.83% increase and a 0% increase. The final levy amount and budget will be presented in December. The council can approve a levy amount that is equal to or less than, but not greater than the preliminary levy amount. So, the following three resolutions will approve the levies for the city, the HRA, and also the preliminary budget.
Thank you Rhonda, very good, and do we have any questions or comments from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Do you have to vote on these independently?
Yes.
I think motion to approve. Resolution 7913.
7913, we have a motion to approve as presented, 3.4.1 at-
Second.
Eight million, and that's by Nate, and we have a second by Brent, any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Now we'll move on to 8013, Proposed HRA 2014 Levy, and what is the council's wishes on that?
So move we approve.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. The third one is 3.434, or 343, 8113, Proposed 2014 Budget, and what is the council's wishes on that?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Brent to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. And now we move on to Resolution 8213, the FAA granted agreement, and with that we'll go now to Troy, and thank you Rhonda, good job.
Okay, this is the resolution that I had mentioned before about the Airport Master Plan Study and the grant agreement. All project costs are eligible for 90% grant funding, the master plans, scope of services have been approved by the FAA. The grant offer is for $170,685, that's representing 90% of the federal funding participation for all participated project costs, and the local share would be then 10% of that, not to exceed $18,965. So, staff would recommend approval of the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the FAA grant agreement for the update of the Airport Master Plan, including the Airport Layout Plan.
Thank you Troy, any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby, any further discussion? See, none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Now we move on to ordinance, 3.5.1, the second reading of ordinance 1613, to rezone property of Community Resource Bank located at the intersection of Lincoln Avenue and Academy Street, and with that we'll go to Troy.
So, this is the second reading of the rezoning for the Pillsbury property from R3 Single and Two Family Residential to PUD Plan Unit Development District. Had first reading at the last council meeting, and staff would recommend approval of the second reading. I will note that the state statute requires two-thirds majority vote of the council because this is an upzone from residential, so you need five votes for it, and Planning Commission recommended approval on it, and in reference to the earlier question, I have not had any additional comments from the public since the last meeting.
Thank you Troy, any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
Pardon?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey, any further discussion? Would this be an ordinance, ask for roll call?
Councilmember Burbank?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Svenby?
Aye.
Trulson?
Aye.
Dodson?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
This has been approved also, thank you very much, and with that we'll move on to the next item, which is miscellaneous, 3.7.1, Consider Bids to Receive for the Oatana Art Center Edition, and there we go to Chris.
Thank you Les, as you know, the Art Center recently went out for bid, and upon receiving all of the bids, it was determined that the amount was in excess of what had been set aside for the project, and so they are recommending that the council reject all bids at this point. Their plan is to do some value engineering to their plans, try and make some changes, and rebid probably in the winter for an early spring construction.
Thank you Chris, with that, the motion is to reject all bids, and with that, what is the chair?
So move, so move.
Motion by Raymond to reject the bids, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz, any further discussion?
Not going to be officially in the paper, like it was the other day, maybe.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved to reject. With that we'll move on to change meeting date of the 1st November, date of the 1st November 2013 council meeting, and again we go to Chris.
As you are aware, we have been notified by the school district that they intend on holding a special election on Tuesday, November 5th. Per the Minnesota statute, it would prohibit a public meeting on the date of an election between the hours of 6:00 and 8:00 PM, so we won't be able to meet during our regular time, and so we wanted to allow proper notification to the media. Staff would recommend changing the council meeting to that Monday, November 4th, if possible, or we're open to other dates if council so chooses.
Thank you Chris, what is the council's wishes here? I guess from my standpoint, I like the Monday change, kind of coincides with most of the other ones that we've done.
Brent, don't you have problems on Mondays?
Possibly, I don't know.
Okay.
The recommendations from the council?
I'll make a motion to move it to the 4th.
Okay, we have a motion by Greg to move it to the 4th, do we have a second to that?
We have a second. The 4th is a Monday.
Monday the 4th.
Monday the 4th, yes.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Dave Burbank, any further discussion? See, none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved and it's moved to the 4th for that, Chris.
Okay.
And with that we'll move on to public comment, and anyone in the audience wishes to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name, and we'll give you some time to speak.
Good evening.
I'll take off my heels. Good evening, my name is Jennifer Libby. I'm the president and CEO of the Oatana Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism, and tonight I'm here to publicly recognize a letter and endorse the letter that we sent to the council members saying that the chamber supports a 0% levy. And I think it's often at these meetings where you see us coming to give constructive feedback or to ask for things, and I think it's equally important to come and say, "We applaud the fiscally conservative suggestion that you have in terms of looking at this." As the voice of business of over 580 members, we understand the rigor it takes to come forward with this kind of recommendation and the decisions that have to be made and to have effect of going forward without compromising the infrastructure. So, we want to make sure that you hear our support and the voice of business saying we support that 0% levy increase. So, again, on behalf of the Public Policy Committee and Dr. Mike Peterson and myself as the CEO and President of the Chamber, we support that 0% levy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comment, and we'll start with Dave.
Nothing from Ward 3 tonight.
Kevin?
Schools are now open. Be aware of kids, and we're starting to see more rolling stops. Please stop at stop signs, these little kids are running all over.
It does say stop, yes. Okay, Brent?
Nothing to see here.
Raymond?
I just got one item. Senior Place is celebrating their 25th anniversary. I don't happen to have, and maybe Chris can talk about it.
Yeah, 25th anniversary, Thursday, September 19th, 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. 4:30 is the social hour, 5:15 is the dinner, 6:00 p.m. is the program. RSVP by September 6th. The event is free to all Senior Place members. Come and help us celebrate 25 years at the Senior Place.
If you can make it, it'd be nice to join people there to celebrate. 25 years ago, I was on this council when we started that 25 years ago, and we had two groups of people in town that didn't want to start a Senior Place. In fact, I remember the night we met at the church on, in town because we wanted to be at neutral grounds, and I don't think I've ever been chewed out as much I've ever been in my life by two groups, and we agreed that night to form a new senior group in town. That was 25 years ago, so it, we went to a church to be neutral, and it was kind of an interesting evening itself.
And you've come back for more.
Yeah, 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 and I came back for more, yeah.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to Nate.
Everything's peaceful in Ward 2, that I know.
Great, thank you. Move on to the mayor, Tom.
I just look forward to the opening of our first Italian restaurant in our city of Oatana, so thank you for choosing Oatana to expand in.
Thank you for receiving this opportunity in town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Chris?
Just a couple of things. There will be a JCPark playground dedication Monday, September 9th at 5:00 p.m. at JCPark. Please join us in celebrating the new playground. Cookies and lemonade will be served, and that's been just a great project and reflects the donations by the JCs and other organizations coming forth and putting money towards some new playground equipment that was much needed. Also, to announce, the City of Oatana Human Rights Commission is presenting a community intersections series, series of three workshops, and we invite the public to attend any or all of the sessions. The first one will be held on Thursday, September 12th at the Oatana Art Center. Starts at 6:30 with some light refreshments, and the program will begin at 7:00. And our topic is melting pot or salad bowl? And this is where you can learn about assimilation, pluralism, theories of melting pot versus salad bowl, and we hope, the commission hopes to give people an opportunity to learn how to optimize every person's assets, skills, and perspectives, as well as how to effectively promote and create a culture of inclusion. So, we hope that you can attend that. There's no registration fee. We encourage you to come on out. There'll be future intersections. Topics are Thursday, October 10th called Beyond Taco Night, another interesting title, and Thursday, November 14th is called Speak Out, and that deals with language and communication issues relating to culture. And then, the final thing, we also have a 50th celebration at Brooktree this weekend. There will be some activities down at Brooktree, and we hope you check into those as well. And that's all I had.
And what time was that, JCPark?
JCPark is at 5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m. There were three groups that donated JCs in the Kewanas in the city. It was a $30,000 project for that playground equipment.
Thank you. And I have nothing. Thank you for the evening, and with that, here will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.